Good evening, we're gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Will you please stand and join me? Tonight, we have an invocation by Pete Mayo via Christy.
Thank you. Let us pray. Eternal and ever-living God, we invoke you to thank you for the life you give us and for all the blessings we enjoy. And we ask your blessing on this meeting, on our representatives, on our city, on our state, and on our country. Please bestow wisdom and the personal peace of heart to be able to work together for the common good. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please draw me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Talking to me, there we go. I got a couple of proclamations this evening. I'll go ahead and start off with this first one, and then we'll have a second one here in just a second. This one is for Project Warmth. Would you like to come up and join me for the Project Warmth proclamation? This read as follows, Office of the Mayor, City of Pittsburgh, Kansas proclamation. Whereas Project Warmth is a community effort that has been in existence for thirty years, and whereas on Thursday, October 5th, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and from 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m., citizens may visit the lower level of the Memorial Auditorium and Convention Center and enjoy a bowl of chili or soup and a slice of homemade pie to support this worthy cause. And whereas reaching the annual goal would not be possible without the generous support of local businesses who donate their time and products to make this event successful. And whereas we ask our community to support this effort and assist our neighbors in Crawford County with utility payments during the winter months. Now therefore, I, Michael Gray, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2017, as Project Warmth Day in Pittsburgh, and urge all citizens to attend this important fundraiser to help our fellow citizens.
Hi, my name's Luanne Collier, and I'm with Wesley House, but on behalf of the Pittsburgh Ministerial Alliance and the Project Warmth Committee, we'd like to thank Mayor Gray and our City Commission for their support and the community's support. This is a vital project to so many of our Crawford County residents and Pittsburgh citizens because they have to make a choice between paying their utility bills, putting food on their table, or perhaps buying medication. So it is a tremendous blessing when the city and the community supports us, and so we thank you very much.
We also have another proclamation for Constitution Week. Would you like to come and join me? I can read it while you stand up here with me, or would you like to sit?
...of the American Revolution.
Okay.
Our local chapter.
Sure.
And as Constitution Day appeared on Sunday, this is the nearest meeting.
Okay. Would you like me to read this?
That'll be fine.
Okay. This is Office of the Mayor, City of Pittsburgh, Kansas proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Michael Gray, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2017, as Constitution Week in Pittsburgh, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you.
Thank you again to those that joined us this evening for the proclamations. Next item on the agenda is public input. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak on any matter under public input? Go ahead and step forward if you could please state your name and address for the record, and then let us know what's on your mind.
Okay. Brian Hanson, I live 111 Trustwood Estates here in Pittsburgh. I own some properties in the city of Pittsburgh, and my main business and the main property that I'm concerned with is 221 East 3rd, other known, everybody knows as Carthy's Pub. I have two properties adjacent to me that are more or less junkyards than they are viable properties to do business on, in my opinion. I've owned my business for thirteen years. There was a fire just straight to the west of me. They're all owned by the same person, by the way. Randy Velela owns them all, okay? The property at 217 East 3rd, there was a major fire there, how many years ago now? Nine years ago. The remains of that fire still remain. It's never been cleaned up. He has fires on other properties that remain to be cleaned up, but the two next to me that I'm worried about the most. I've went through multiple channels through the city, the codes enforcement department. I've even contacted our city manager with hardly any help at all. Whenever I make those phone calls, it says things like, "Oh, it's Randy," or it's, "Oh, Randy Velela," you know, blah, 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 blah. I don't really like where it's going. Nine years later, here I am, finally coming to the city commission meeting to voice my opinion. I mean, I welcome you guys to make a drive down 3rd Street. I have some pictures right here if you'd like to see them. Can I bring them up?
Sure, that's fine.
Address is on the back. I'm here to just get an answer. When is this stuff gonna be cleaned up? It's obviously against code. I've been told it's against code, and there's no cleanup going on. So I'm looking for some help from you as the city commission to make our city do the right thing and get it cleaned up. I know we always share that budget issues and things like that, but the codes state, no different as residential or commercial, eventually we step in as a city and take care of it and either charge them back or go to a lawsuit situation. And I think it's time for that. Not only that, but the person that owns his properties owns a demolition company, and we give him bids all the time throughout the city, and he still doesn't have the respect to clean up his own properties.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I can't tell you that I'll have an answer, or the city will have an answer for you tonight. This is the first time I've spoken with you about this issue. But it's certainly something that we can follow up with the city staff and understand more details about what's going on, what the history is. I think that would be the next step for us to follow up on this, and then we can report back later.
We are prepared to report tonight.
Okay.
I knew Brian came to the last meeting and missed the start date because it was such a short meeting, so.
That's fine.
Dexter normally handles, Dexter's been working with Randy, so I asked Cameron to pull together his notes from Dexter. So Cameron will provide an update, and then Brian can, because, you know, I've spoken to Brian probably three years ago about the fire and where we are, so. Cameron, do you mind? You've got Dexter's notes and what you can tell us about it?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, Dexter's been working the last couple of years since he's been employed with the city to build a relationship with Randy. He's worked with Randy and has started to get a plan together on getting the properties cleaned up. If you went by his properties there along Joplin Street, you've seen that that site's been greatly improved. He's spent quite a bit of his own money going there to clean that site up, bring in rock. He's also demoed some of his own structures that were on that property. His ultimate plan is, upon finishing that site up, to start moving some of his other operations and equipment vehicles over to that site. It's going to be a little bit of an ongoing process, but we are seeing good progress being made there. One of the items to keep in mind, too, is the property that Randy owns that's in question here is also zoned IP-2, which allows him to have that equipment, those vehicles, on that site. So he's not doing anything that's not within our ordinances. The upkeep, the weeds, that, that's one of the things that we're looking at getting addressed with Randy. Unfortunately, he's not the only one in town that we also have issues with on that same concern. But the long-term goal is that Randy is looking at, at some point, being able to demo some of those structures that he has, and again, move all of his operations over to that site to the east of Joplin. But again, that is going to take a little bit of time for things to move along on that.
I'd just like to say I was on, still on the fire department when that one property caught on fire. And I understand your frustrations, and in my opinion, how much longer does that take to get something done? Because I agree with Mr. Hanson. It's been long enough.
I've dealt with this as quietly as I can have for many, many years, and it's time. And this is the same speech that I've heard probably once a year for the past eight or nine years. It's just the same thing, so.
I was at the meeting with PSU in the city of Pittsburgh this past week, and I thought that I saw some kind of top loader or shovel or something inside the old Postise building that looks like they were working on some kind of a demolition there. That's what it looked like to me, I don't know. But I can understand your frustration. It's taken way too long to.
And, you know, I do have another new neighbor on the block that just came in and spent a lot of money and cleaned up that other corner, the Frisco Building. The other little grocery store that's my neighbor to the north has done a good job of that, and I believe I take care of my property pretty well also. So we have one corner on that particular block of 3rd Street, and then across the street to the south is what I'm mainly concerned with. And you guys are putting a lot of investment into downtown, and I believe I'm part of downtown. You know, I'm a block and a half from basically Broadway over. So with all the renovations going on on Block 22 and other areas of, you know, putting in funds, Fox Theater, things of that nature, if we don't get this cleaned up, it's gonna be a blight on our community also.
Even though that's, would you say IP-2 is owned for that, that he can have that equipment there? I believe that, picture that one truck showed that didn't have tires and stuff on it. Does that allow for disabled vehicles also there?
If it's being worked on, being repaired, you would be able to do that in IP-2.
How do you know? Do you go by there and see what kind of progress has been made on that piece of equipment? If it is being worked on, because it's probably set there for a while. I don't know how long it takes to fix it, but.
I know that Dexter has a weekly meeting with Mr. Velela to talk about the progress and their plans as they go forward.
So, in terms of this plan that we're working forward, I'm assuming it has a timeline? So are we getting responses on what the timeline will be for these things to be addressed?
Right. The work that's being done on Joplin Street was only just done this year. So we are seeing quite a bit of progress over, you know, if you want to go back nine years or more than that, what you've seen this last year has been quite a bit more than what you've seen in the past. And we're continuing to work and moving forward on that.
Well, it does seem that we do have a bit of a leverage on Randy in as much as he does do work for the city. And it has been there for a long, long time, all that crap that he's got.
Okay, so here's the city's take, and I apologize that I've met with Brian at least, at least three times, and he's right. The first two years I was here, and we probably haven't met in at least two years. And he's been, he has been more patient than anyone that's next to any one of our numerous properties because, believe me, Randy is not the only person in this town that has a property that has $100,000 demolition tag on it and that needs to be torn down. And it does come down to, in that case, taxpayer money and how much money we have to do it. It's a little more complicated with Randy's. When I first got here, the building was burned. There was literally stuff hanging off of the building. I don't know that it was even fenced in. It was, you know, it literally looked like it just burned down the day before, and it had probably been two years at that point, maybe three. So we worked with Randy back then just to get, to knock the loose stuff off. The problem, as Bill Beasley always told me, was it wasn't insured, therefore, there's no insurance money to put a lien against. And how are we going to collect the money? Because it was, it was well, it's well over six figures to tear it down. Anyway, so the safety hazard is where we started with Randy, probably. Dexter's been here two years. Since Dexter got here, we had a new approach. So we approached several of these people. Dexter came up with a plan because Randy doesn't just have this property, that he does have at least two others that have been on fire that remain. And then he had whatever was going on on Joplin. So the plan was, and believe me, I don't want to defend Randy. If Randy needs to come in here and defend himself to you guys on where he is, legally, we have done a lot. Administratively, we have done a lot. We came up with a plan. This building and a red building somewhere, I think, are the other two to be knocked down. The work on Joplin is significant. I know we spent over $50,000 on that. The reason he did the work over there is because it was open to the public. It was a lot easier to get in and out of. It was an extreme safety hazard. There were regular fires. There was a lot of drug traffic going in and out of those properties by, I don't want to say homeless because it wasn't all homeless, but that was a very easy place to do that kind of activity. That has been cleaned up. The next piece is supposed to be the demolition of these two buildings. I'd like to just be able to go in and demolish them. The reason Randy continues to do work is because we've knocked down 76 structures. Additional structures that aren't $100,000 apiece to knock down, and Randy is one of the key contractors that does that, and he's probably one of the top two as far as getting it done, getting it done in a timely fashion. It's a, it's a, it's as frustrating, it's not as frustrating for us as it is for Brian because it's Brian's neighbor. That's the only one he sees. It's frustrating for us because there are numerous property owners that have properties downtown in this condition. And without naming names, I've got another one that's up in three weeks that's $100,000 to knock down, and that property owner's tied to another building and literally is just like, has the money to knock it down and said, "I'm just gonna let the city do it, and then I'll reimburse you." I mean, those are the struggles we do every day. This one is not any, any different. We have made more progress with Randy in a broad scope, but as far as Brian's concerned, it's zoned the way it is. It's not, it's no longer a safety hazard, so that building, as it sits there, is unfortunately a little lower priority than the other ones that were just done and the rest of the cleanup. It is supposed to be done next. Dexter's not here. Dexter meets with him on a regular basis. I know that's not a great answer, but those are the facts, and there's only, you know, there's no budget to knock down a $100,000 building and wait to see if we can collect. I know nobody wants to hear it's a budget issue, but nobody wants to hear it's a codes issue. But when there's only two codes people, everything's a code issue. It's all resource-driven. And I think Randy's been, you know, pretty good on the amount of property he has. And if you look at it en masse, we've done a pretty good job of taking care of it. But it doesn't make any explanations for, the property across from Brian's has been like that for at least three years. But the reason it's like that is because it's a prioritized list, and there's, you know, I know everybody thinks that we somehow have this massive leverage on people and their property and the condition they keep it in. And the reality is, we don't. We have a court system. We have the ability to write tickets. I can't take people's property. I can't throw them off of their property. And the one thing we can do is condemn, demolish, and put it on the taxes or collect after the fact. And that's a lot easier to do when it's $5,000 to knock down a house than $100,000 or more to knock down a building. So go ahead, I'm sure you've got.
That being said, you do have leverage with this particular person because we give him money. We give him bids. And you can cut him out of the bid process until you say, "Clean up your properties." In my opinion, you can't. Maybe legally you cannot. I don't see how you cannot. I mean, you could take his city's license away from demolition until those properties are up to code.
He is working through a plan, and like I said, because your property isn't the first one on the plan, it's gotta be frustrating, but I'm not gonna cut Randy out of business for cleaning up Joplin to the extent that he cleaned it up and moving down his list. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I'll take my, you know, directions from the five of you. If you think that's what needs to be done, I would recommend we get Randy in here and say it, but Randy has worked with us. I don't have any complaints from Cameron. I don't have any complaints. And like I said before, I can't undo what's across the street from you. I know it's supposed to be knocked down. I know it's been worked on. It hasn't gone five years. I've been here with nothing done. It was cleaned up to the extent that it was no longer concrete hanging off of rebar four feet off the ground. But it's a huge eyesore, and it's right out in front of his bar. So it's a big deal to Brian, and I get that.
But talking to two different properties, the one that had the fire, sure, but the one completely across the street from you to the south, it's just nothing but junk. I mean, it doesn't take structural cleanup for that particular property to be cleaned up. It needs to go to the scrapyard, or, I mean, it's got probably 500 tires over there. So I don't think that he has probably the proper paperwork to be a tire disposal lot either.
No? So do we have the resources to go pick it up?
What he's got stored there is allowable within an IP-2 zone. Yeah, I mean.
It's a tough situation.
Yeah, I don't have, until we had this meeting tonight, I didn't have all the details, and I still probably don't have all the answers to questions that I probably want to ask. And I do think it is slightly unfair for us to have this conversation without Randy being able to be here to answer questions and address concerns on his own. I mean, I think you would probably admit that if somebody had complaints against you, you'd like to be here to be able to defend yourself, so. I'm saying in this context, with you being at this meeting and, you know, doing this publicly, so. I mean, I'd like to be able to understand more. I appreciate the background. The city staff was prepared to communicate this evening. That certainly is helpful for me to understand the basis for your complaint and the reason why you're here. So, but until, and I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the commission, of course. Everybody has their own opinion, but I'd still like to be able to wrap my arms further around what the plan is and talk with our folks and then give Randy a chance to, you know, because I think Darren has a point. He has been working on properties. Hasn't been working on this property. And I certainly understand your frustration relative to that, but he certainly has been working on some other properties to help clean those up. So I'd like to be able to understand what our, in what context we've had this conversation, what the plan outlines, what Randy's, you know, addressed with us from a timeline standpoint, and then go from there. That's my personal opinion. Because I still don't feel like I have my arms wrapped around the issue, just with you bringing your complaint and then kind of going through a five-minute summary. And I hope you understand my response there, but.
That's why I came to the commission.
I appreciate you coming here. I know that's frustrating. I can, I can, I can understand that. I drive by that property all the time, and I see how horrible it is, and I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want my business next to it either. But I think what you've done, coming here in front of us, is to highlight it, publicize it, and see if we can't do something for you with Randy's cooperation. And I appreciate you coming here and pointing it out to us.
And quite frankly, the way, you know, Brian brings up a great point. The leverage we have is, we're not gonna give you any more city work, which is really the leverage we use to get him to clean up the stuff he's cleaned up. I mean, he had one entire building fall into the street. He was out there with us that night. I mean, that alone superseded anything else because it was literally his building laying in the street, and it took, I don't know, several months. But at that point, it was like, you know, you've got to get a plan to clean this up, or we are not going to give you any more work. And the plan went, and the other side of it is, he does good work, and I'd hate to see, you know, how many structures we wouldn't have knocked down. But it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that there's Brian and there's all these other people that are committing to downtown. And there are some real giant holes downtown, and they're way beyond the four of you and me and our staff's ability to fix it up. Eventually, the community, and Randy's started down that path, but the history in Pittsburgh is, I'm going to charge rents. I'm going to keep that money. I'm not investing in that property, and when it falls over, the city can deal with it. And that's why we've knocked down 76 structures this year, and we've got another 150 to do. And this is a great example of the law is just right there, where Randy is okay with zoning, and it's not a safety hazard, and Brian feels like his business is suffering, and probably for good reason. But I don't take it lightly. I think I will share Randy's plan with the commission and take whatever advice they give me. And, you know, I apologize for your frustration, but I promise you, I deal with it every day, and I'm trying to find a way to fix it, and it's a giant problem. And Randy is, I promise you, one of many people that have taken advantage of our housing and our building codes to do whatever they want with property and say, "The city will deal with it later." And later's today, and you've been as patient as anybody, because I've met with you probably my first month here. So thanks for coming in, and.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Will that plan have the timeline and everything on it, Darren?
That plan will have everything Dexter knows, and Dexter had a calendar. So Randy was, you know, they had a priority, and it's all right there, and, you know, it's happening. It's just nothing happens fast when it comes to demoing structures.
Okay.
But I'll get it to you.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Brian, for coming. Anybody else have anything on public input this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there items to be removed? Hearing none?
聽到
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. We'll call those. Aye.
Ketterman.
Aye.
Mensah.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, option agreement for the purchase of real estate. Consider an option agreement for the purchase of real estate between the City of Pittsburgh and Sugar Creek Packing Company.
Mayor Commissioners, what you have before you is a, it's really Henry's crafty work. We were approached by Sugar Creek Packing with the idea that at some point in the next five years, they were gonna want to purchase some land from us. We looked at the history, that we've had other options by other people that wanted a, basically a first, a right, a first refusal to buy a piece of land before we sold it. Based on what Sugar Creek's going through right now, they're talking about possibly expanding. We thought maybe the most prudent thing would be to have five one-year options, and so that's what you see before you, our five one-year options with the purchase price at the end of that being for the fair market value that we've had it appraised at. So it's a pretty simple deal. It's not unique, and that there's been a couple others, but you don't see these very often. It's good for both sides. We get paid $5,000 a year whether we do anything. If they actually sell it, we get paid a quarter million, and if nothing happens, at the end of five years, we have $25,000. And Sugar Creek feels like that, you know, they've protected their purchase, their purchaser's investment in that area that's right next to their facility, so it seems like a win-win. Happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate Henry's craftiness in coming up with a way to meet everybody's needs and give us the best deal we can.
That's with an F and not a P, right?
That was an F, not a P.
I have one question, and that is, the sale price is based on the value placed on it today. If this does not get consummated until five years, in five years, maybe something fabulous will happen right next to it, and the price of it would be a different figure. Is there any, any kind of a... Does that get addressed at all?
No, Commissioner. The purchase price under this present option is the $250,000 regardless of when the option is actually exercised.
So we have an airport next to it on one side, and then we have Sugar Creek's actual land on the other side, which, if they did anything, they would continue to build out their plant, which is already next to it. So I think the $5,000 per acre out in the county is pretty good for now. I do agree, if Cessner, Boeing, or somebody dropped in about a $400 million facility, I think we'd probably drag them back to the table and talk about, but there's, right now, the option is each year. There's a chance to redo it, but it's for the $250. But great point, great question.
If there's nothing else, I move to approve.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve the option agreement. All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion. Motion carries. Next item, non-agenda reports, requests. Any non-agenda items?
I think we're quiet tonight. Just did want to mention that Jeremy wasn't here and that he was on a bus.
Yes, for the record, for those who are listening.
Had offered to call in and I kind of told him there was only one thing on the agenda and since he was on the bus moving, gonna be very successful anyway, so he said, okay, thanks, but that's all we got.
Yes, thank you, thank you for, I meant to mention that earlier on and I forgot, so. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
No move.
On second. It's been moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.